The full building won't be, so if you look at the grade, can you zoom in on the grade?
Sure.
Difference between the proposed building and how it kind of slopes down. What we're gonna, what the proposition is, is to build a retaining wall around the site so that half of this building, the structure's in the ground. So, I know visibility, the main, the main reason why I'm here is we've got metal siding that comes as a part of the package, and the pitch is a two twelve roof, it's not a four twelve roof, which is the minimum. So, we would need you folks to opine and give us an approval to do something that's not typical with the standards. My goal with the retaining wall to drop the building is to make it a little less visible. And if you go to, I think it's slide number eight or nine, really, the only time you see the maintenance shed, if you're not there to play golf, is driving by heading northbound. If you're southbound, you don't see it because of the tree cover, which we intend on keeping in place. So, yeah, this is a great picture. You would really only see two thirds of the building.
The upper two thirds, you mean?
Yes, yeah, the upper two thirds. The lower two third would be set in, that retaining wall, and then as you drive down, you would hit what would be the grade of the building. So, that was something that we had tried to do to try to accommodate a little less vision on the, on the metal siding. Right up the street is the, a similar color that we would use, it used to be Spears Garage, I think it's slide number two or three. There's an existing pre-engineered metal building, yeah, right on the road, that's probably a thousand feet up the street. It would be newer finishes than that. If you go down, sorry to jump you around, if you go down to the existing buildings, one of my employers, we had a, we were contracted with the school district, I think it's like all the way at the end, down in Southern Maine to install four or five of these buildings onsite at their, on their campus, and it's used for furniture storage, a garage for equipment, and similar what we'd be using it for. They're really nice buildings, the trim package is really clean. I would propose a tan building with a green trim.
Similar to that color there?
Yeah, exactly. And the reason being is they're, they're kind of earth toned colors, and the green roof will most likely send in with the vegetation, at least during the summer. In the winter, all bets are off, but again, it's, it's not a bright pink building. It's, 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 at least, I don't think they have that, that color option, so you don't have to worry. And we'd be open to if you wanted to have some input on the color, that, you know, that was more pleasing, I could get you a couple of samples of what they offer with the building package.
Okay, if you're, if that's what you've got through the overview, then I'll ask board members if you have any questions or clarification. Keep in mind here, this is not a final review, don't need to get into a lot of details, just trying to get big things out of the way.
My understanding, my understanding from your application is this is a three bay building, not, not the building that we're looking at, but similar to that.
Correct, it's not one for one. I wanted to provide you folks with the best material selection, yeah.
So, in the site plan, it shows a portion of the trees removed in order to place the building, and it looks like a proximal location of septic system?
Mm-hmm.
So, is that a, how many trees do you think will be removed in that area?
Can you go to slide, I think it's six or seven, and what it is, is the southbound view where the trees would be blocking the building. I think it's up maybe number four or three. Next picture, next slide now, number five. So, if you look, the, the, the taller trees adjacent to the road are not coming down. The cleanup would be shrubs, what's foliage that would need to be removed to, to get the slab in place, but our goal is to keep this as a visual barrier, so that you don't know what's going in there. Because if we get rid of those trees, then it's a moot point saying you can't see it heading southbound.
Right.
But, yeah, our goal is to, to not, to remove as little trees as possible along the road, so that we have that visual barrier.
Yeah. I mean, that's kind of been our approach for when we review these, is that the amount of screening really determines how much scrutiny we're going to give to the building itself.
Sure.
So, the less screening that you have to do, or the fewer screening trees that are in shrubs that are removed, the better it is for you in terms of reviewing the, the building.
Definitely.
Details, materials, colors, roof slopes, all of that.
And I think where he had put the septic, just preliminary, so if trees are important, we can take that into consideration when we go back to our engineer and say, we need to shift this twenty feet so that this block of trees goes untouched. So, we have a little bit of flexibility.
Right.
And I'd have no issue going out there and marking with some tape, like, these are going to stay, I promise you they're not going, as, and we can put it in with the permit application as a contingency, or, you know, or as an appendix that.
To your point, it's actually some of the ground cover that probably provides more.
Exactly.
Yeah, than, than the trees.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, the bushes, yeah.
Ground cover, you actually have some, some shielding.
I promise you, if you give it a year or two, it's gonna grow back there. They, they, they can't keep it up enough. But if there, whatever we would need to do, that we would, you know, we're willing to make it work.
Okay. You okay with that? Thanks.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
We've got fifty by sixty feet, that is, you got a typo in your letter.
Do I? Okay.
It's not sixty inches.
Oh, gosh, yeah. No, definitely not. That would be, it would be a very expensive wall.
That's thirty thousand square feet there. There's no.
I think it's three thousand.
Three thousand.
Three thousand. There's no limitation on that building size.
I, I believe that's true, this is in the nine oh eight zone, yes.
I was looking through and I don't see any limitation at all.
Correct. I believe that's correct. Okay. So, I just got a little bit more about the retaining wall that you've got going around there. And so, I understand the slope, it looks like maybe towards the back of the building, which is closest to the road, it looks relatively level, the terrain, maybe more level, but the side is sloping down. So, would the retaining wall be at full height on the back of the building nearest the road? And then, would it actually slope down with the slope of the terrain on the side there?
We most likely have to, I mean, for it to serve its purpose of the wall.
Right.
I think right now he only has a five or six foot wall, because that's all, i- if you look where, where it's flat right now, that's their material laydown area, when someone will come back in and drop topsoil or whatever it may be. So, it's easier for us to disturb as little ground as possible, because it's set in place. I think that we would extend the wall just where we would need to, and the height would, like you say, it would taper with the building to be, you know, aesthetically.
And so, your, your plan would be that the wall would be just barely above the ground surface, finished ground level?
On that backside, yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And I can get an elevation if you guys like to see it, or, you know, I can draw up a cut through if, if you're.
We'd like to see that in the final site plan.
Sure, okay, so a section of the retaining wall?
Yeah, the building.
And the building.
Well, yeah, and grade and everything, okay, perfect.
Both. So, it looks like you do have the garage doors, of course, on the backside, away from the road, of course, on the hard surface, whatever it might be. Are, are there any windows or anything, or what's the side of that wall gonna look like?
It's just gonna be siding, and we'll have two egress doors.
Okay.
And so, this, I, I met with a local architect that I've used on a consultant on previous projects, and where it's a storage building, it doesn't, we don't have to get the fire marshal involved. So, as long as we've got our two exits, where, what we do on the inside's pretty much easy, because it's a storage building, which is, or maintenance facility.
Right. So, let me just make a, a broad statement here about the corrugated steel siding. Typically, on, especially some of the gateway roads, Route ninety, Route seventeen, we try to somehow break that facade up if it is corrugated steel, so that it looks a little bit more attractive. It could be dressed up with landscaping, it could be different types of corrugated siding, and we ran into that with one of our previous site applications, where they picked not, I'll say, not the standard corrugated one, but something that was textured, and it was a little bit more attractive. They also did, in that case, this was on Route one, they also did some things with the facade of the building to make it more interesting, so there weren't straight lines. But then, there were other instances where there are large buildings, such as gymnasiums, MRC, that are back off the road, you can't see them, they're shielded, and in that case, we, we typically don't have much in the way concerns. So, at least for me, I would say that it would be the area, the small area that you could view from the southern approach, coming out of the south going north, and just how that looks, if there was some landscaping in front of it, and, and things like that. So, I mean, it doesn't just need to be, I don't think, the architecture, but it could all, also be the landscaping on that side of the building that might just break it up a little bit.
A little bit of foliage, so that you're driving by, that it may not be a block of trees, but enough that you might catch glimmers of it going through.
Right, and I mean, just looking at some of the photos you provided, I mean, it very nicely done, the landscaping on the golf course, and some of the shrubs and bushes you show there, I would expect it would be, you know, somewhat consistent with that.
Sure.
You know, just as we would be concerned about the appearance from the road, I would expect that your clientele might also.
Oh, if you've got, because I went to school, I've got a degree in architecture, and I remember my teacher always saying, you never get new shoes and put old shoelaces on it. So, we won't put a new building in and then leave the hardscaping rough, and this is a great opportunity for them to improve on what they already have there. So, yeah, I totally agree. And I can, I can work on a landscape plan to show, might not know exactly what species, but at least like three to five foot brush, you know, or a shrub or whatever it may be, okay.
Joe, what do you think about the windows?
There is, there is some guidance in the, in the land use ordinance about landscaping also.
Okay.
You could look at.
What about some windows would serve a dual purpose? They would break up the, a blank facade, and they would also provide some light into the interior. They wouldn't have to be ground level windows, but they could be elevated.
If that, if that works out with the operation of what you're trying to do, that would be, that'd be good, too.
Okay. Is that gonna be, if we don't, if we don't put windows in, is that gonna be something that you'll push back on? Or you're just saying it's an option to consider?
I'm just saying that that's one thing.
Where, with the, with these pre-engineered metal structures, they're like, you, we're, we'll engage a contractor and say, we need this, and they're like, yeah, we've got the package, and then they just pull it off the shelf. So, if they have windows, I can definitely bring it up that, as long as it doesn't change our price point. And, and I do agree, it, it gives some scale to the side of the building, rather than here's three hundred square feet of metal.
Yeah, and typically, we don't like, like the long boring lines, you know, just big, straight lines, like sixty foot across with nothing at all there.
Yeah.
You know, so shrubbery, something that makes it a little more interesting would be good.
Well, and also, there's the option of maybe extending that wall up to give the wall as kind of something you're looking at, rather than just dying, sure.
Yep, lots of options.
What is, what is that retaining wall constructed of?
It's just gonna be concrete reinforced with rebar. Unless you want us to maybe, I mean, there's the option of, I mean, that's how he's, he's shown it.
I don't think you're gonna see it from a road.
Yeah.
The wall's all gonna be pretty much below the surface. Is that what you're concerned about? The, the appearance?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
It sounds like it's all below.
Let me, let me, let me, what I can always do is work with Orion and maybe get a section cut of what we're looking at, and I can get his opinion on it, because he works with you guys enough that he'll have an idea of what you might be looking for.
I, I have a question, it's not really our, our business, but I'm curious. You're replacing, currently, the Quonset hut is your dry storage.
Yes.
And you're going to move the calistery to the older wooden building.
Correct.
How old is that building, and is it gonna really keep things dry?
Yeah, it, it's, it's watertight right now. It's, it's in pretty good shape, yeah. What we ran into is rather than spending the money to try and connect to an older building, and it is depreciating. A brand new metal building's gonna be there for fifty, seventy years, so it just seems a long-term investment. But, yeah, that building itself is in good condition. I wouldn't say it's in great condition, but it's not failing in any way.
Because I'm just concerned about the kind of chemicals that you have, if they get, if there's water damage, then we're dealing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's watertight. It was, it's, I think it was, if we could keep a building and increase the amount of storage that we had, we'll, we'll keep the larger wood building. But, yeah, it, it, the building's in good condition.
Okay.
Scott?
Yeah, I had two questions about the roof pitch. Apologize if it, one, I misanswered by what's in there. What direction does it pitch?
So, right now, I think the way that he had drawn it up is there is two gable ends. The, the top of the page would be one gable end, and then the other end, as you're driving up, looking at the three bay garage, is the other gable end. So, there would be a long linear line, the one that you were talking about, going from the top left page to the bottom left.
Got it, okay.
So, like, as you drive up, yeah, you're seeing the ridge and the peak, and the three bay garage, looking up at the plan like this.
Okay. And then, I, I, I took from the application that the two to twelve pitches, all that's available from this?
With the standard package, yeah.
They don't offer a?
I think they do, but then it puts us out of budget for the size that we need. So, it, again, there's an option that, I'm sure with, with all design, you can spend more money and accommodate what you, you know, you wanna get.
With regard to that, I don't know that the, the planning board has any input on the, on the pitch of the roof. I looked at the land use ordinance, and I didn't see anything in there that said that there was a specific pitch, only one that affected the height, ultimate height.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it, the four twelve pitch was desired.
Yes, yeah, it, it was worded that maybe, maybe, maybe discuss it with us before you do that sort of.
What I was gonna say is, I think that's really a code enforcement item that you would discuss with Scott as far as a pitch of that roof goes.
Yeah.
You, you agree with that?
Just a clarifying question. You said gable end, does that mean that there's a ridge in the center?
Yeah, yes, yeah. So, yeah, like, the, the three garages, as you're coming up, there's a bridge, and then it, then it. Exactly, yeah.
So, it's not a lean to?
No, no, these are pretty, these are pretty standard. The lean to, it actually wouldn't be bad, because you could put some clear story lighting in, and, you know, and, and light it up, but I, I don't think that, again, price point is what we're working with.
I, I did see that. So, it says strongly encouraged?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a consideration?
Interesting language for an ordinance.
Right, right.
Here we are.
Yep. Okay.
Do you feel strongly, Sam?
Rob, Sam, any questions?
Uh, no, I just, with regards to the design of the secondary containment for the gas tank that's being relocated, relocated from in front of that Quonset hut, which I've noticed in the pitch of the existing piece was looking at, especially if it's something you drive next to. Do you guys have a plan for that specifically? Do you have somebody designing that out for you?
What do you mean, like a new gas?
No, I mean, like, your, what is your, is it a purchased secondary containment that goes around the side of that tank? Are you guys building another, like?
I think, I think our goal was to just lift and shift it, if needed, the gas tank. Is that what you're concerned with? Is moving the gas out of the way, or?
No, so, your plan says relocated gas tank and secondary containment.
I'll have to talk to our P E about that, because I'm not sure what he's talking about. I know we've got a gas tank on site that's in the way, but I'm not sure, I wonder if the secondary containment has to do with maybe, like, a grease trap or drainage.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's something that, the issue that you have with what that is, is if somebody drives by and hits it, it goes right to the ground, there's, it has no place for it to drain to if there's a failure to the tank.
I'll have to, I'll have to find that out.
And I think, I mean, they clearly in the design, they understand that, because they've written that into it.
Sure.
Part of that, too, is just trying to get an understanding of what that would.
Honestly, I, I probably breezed over that, that's probably more something that, I won't be here when we do our full permit application. I'll prep the P E who's gonna be here for that question, but he, he'll know more to that than I would.
Perfect, thank you.
Rob?
I might have missed this, but the square footage of the proposed garage, how does that compare to the square footage of the existing? Is it essentially the same footprint?
It's, it's probably like thirty percent larger, twenty percent larger, maybe, but we're, but realistically, we're replacing the Quonset hut, which is probably half that size or less with a larger building, because our goal is to retain the larger of the two buildings.
What happens to the Quonset hut?
Just disappears, hopefully. Hopefully, we don't see it next year somewhere else on the course.
It's your task in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
Regarding the use of the new building, will it be substantially different from the existing buildings? I mean, as far as noise goes, or about traffic, or deliveries, or basically the same operations going on?
Exact same, yeah.
In a different building, okay. All right, anything else?
There, there is one other thing that I think I remember seeing in the ordinance, that when you have buildings, you have multiple buildings on a site, that they're, the aesthetics of the exterior, whatever you have, be similar. So, we've got two buildings that are aged cedar shingles, some clapboard, hodgepodge, whatever they had when they built that maintenance shed, and now a brand new metal siding building. Is that gonna be something that?
But it's replacing a metal siding door.
Yeah.
You, you, you can see, you can see the clubhouse from the road, you can't see the other small building from the road, can you?
What, the Quonset hut?
Yeah.
Or, or, the, the, the small building is, if you're familiar, it's like a ten foot by eight foot spot, small shed where they put golf clubs, like, it's, it's tiny.
Right.
You, it's, it's small enough where you could look past it and not even realize it's there.
Okay, you can't see it from the road, though. When I looked at this satellite photo, I didn't think it was visible.
I think it is, because the, even though the gray drops when you're driving by, you can see it if you're looking at it, but you're looking at the pitch of the roof, so the, you don't see the gable end of the shed. As you drive by, you see shingles.
Okay. Maybe I think those are big issues.
Question. Joe mentioned the type of corrugated metal siding, and you showed a picture of a corrugated metal sided building, calling out the color of the trim and the panels themselves. Is there any flexibility on those colors?
Yeah, but if you, if you, if you folks wanna see samples, maybe, if there's like a better green that you might, that might sway you, or a different tan, I can.
I'm just wondering, I was looking at the photo of the approach from the south and the approach from the north, and if, if there were a light colored building, you might see it more prominently than if it were a dark colored building, just that.
Less light reflecting off of it.
Right.
I can find out, maybe, other than the lighter tan, if there's a darker brown, maybe.
Well, I was gonna say, I think when you're talking about trying to keep consistency and aesthetic, like, that's probably your piece. It doesn't necessarily have to be the same cedar shingles in peace, but if you have green trim on one, you'd wanna use the same color.
Sure, yeah.
Try to get your building color close to the same colors as the other pieces, like, just so that it looks like it's part of it, instead of having like, you know.
Clearly two different.
Right, a very light beige building with, you know, some other trim on it, like, when nothing else there looks like that. That's the stuff that, you know, you wanna kind of avoid, you wanna try to make it blend with the other materials, but it doesn't have to be a specific one-to-one, everybody uses the same shingles on the side. It's just kind of making sure that everything blends.
I can definitely ask for some samples to see what color variance might be different from the tan that we had shown you that we had installed at a previous location.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, and then also the perspective drawings from the different, different sides, too.
Sure.
When they do it.
Okay.
And what the building might look like, and how far the wall might come up. Those would be very helpful in reviewing it later.
So, you guys wanna see some perspectives?
Yes.
Like, how, what sort of level rendering are you looking for?
Well, you could probably give them a good idea, Ryan, because typically, we will get renderings that have side views, front views. And we ask them for what the scale is, or what are you asking?
Like, so when, so like, I can draw this up in CAD, and I can draw an elevation in CAD, but if you want a rendering where it's drawn to look realistic.
It doesn't have to be that detailed. I mean, if you got blocks and you don't have the ribs on the steel showing, that's okay.
Okay.
But at least something.
You'd like to see amassing of it.
Yeah, yeah, to see like where the wall's gonna come approximately, and how it all fits together, where you might put some, you know, shrubs or bushes, just put some, you know, green blobs in there or something, so we have an idea.
Joe, are you talking about having, having these drawings prior to their application?
No, 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 these, these would be at the final site plan.
Okay.
This is what I'm talking about.
Sure.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need to see anything prior to that final site plan.
Yeah, 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 for sure, yeah. This, what, basically, what you're giving me now is going to, yeah, everything's gonna be a package for you folks to review, sure.
Correct.
That way, we try to, we avoid having to ask for it when we come to it, realize we don't have what we're looking for.
That's why I'm here now, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna see you, I wanna see you all twice. Now, and then once we're walking out of the permit, and that's it.
You wanna, wanna be able to see.
That's right.
Have a representation of what it is that we're gonna approve, and that, you know, it seems like it's pretty easy to do that. This, like, an oversight, an overview plan is great for kind of laying things out, but it doesn't really kind of give, you know, an impression of what it is exactly, like, we're gonna look at, we can have analogies and things that are close.
Sure.
But when it comes to the final time, we actually really would like to see a representation of it, kind of where it lands, and, and, yeah, I mean, if it has a little bit of rendering around on it, of where the trees, shrubs, things like that to it, great. But it doesn't have to be a, like, life, or a lifeline capture of the grounds with this blending.
So, we can get it close, but I, I don't have the licenses I had in school for those high level renderings, so it might be a block.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be augmented reality, so.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll get it close. I'll, I'll get you a good blocking mass, at least so you can see how the building's gonna sit on the site, and then I'll let you use your imagination.
Correct.
Cool.
Any questions for us?
No, I appreciate everyone's time tonight, this is super helpful.
Thanks for coming in.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Am I set free?
You are.
You are. All right, y'all have a good evening.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You, too. Okay, and that. That's it. Anybody have anything for other business? No other business.
John?
John?
Mr. Veman?
As the new light is on officially.
Oh, you are, okay, great. So.
Did we get a raise?
Did I get a raise?
No, did we get a raise?
Oh, did we get a raise, yeah.
Did we get a doubling?
A doubling, oh, excellent, excellent.
So, I don't know if everybody's aware, but this is Joe's last meeting as chair. So, I thought I'd take this occasion to mark it with a few words. So, prior to becoming a select board member this past month, it had been my pleasure to serve on the planning board for over a decade, as many of you know. And in that time, there were three different chairs of the planning board, volunteers who selflessly and sometimes thanklessly dedicated countless hours to the town of Rockport. There were some good people in that role, but I can honestly say that Joe, Joe's tour as chair has made the biggest impression upon me. Unlike all chairs, he grew into the position over time, and eventually, he began to see a leadership style emerge. Joe's approach to the planning board has always been about the details, as many of us know. He's an engineer, after all. So, it was important to him to do his homework well before any meeting, and his examples sent the message that we all needed to do the same, which made for much better decisions. Thank you, Joe. Joe worked hard to be respectful of every applicant before the board, but he also was careful to make sure every board member had a chance to express their opinions and ask questions. It's what made us a high-functioning board, and it explains why we found it easy to arrive at a consensus on the applications before us and work as a team. And I've worked with a lot of people and organizations over the years, and I know a strong and thoughtful leader when I see one. Joe's, Joe's been that for this planning board, and we're all better for him leading us. He's left some big shoes to fill, but on behalf of the select board in town of Rockport, thank you for your invaluable service, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind work, and it's been a pleasure serving with everyone. I'm sure this board will carry on and do a fine job after I'm gone.
Wow, now what do you do?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, I, I looked at the, the years you've been on the planning board, it's only, I, I thought it was only six. And I, I think it is.
It was only six.
But it sure seemed like we've been through a lot.
A lot longer than that.
A lot of miles in there.
Yeah, we had some exciting applications in that time.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I, I mean it, it really was a pleasure.
Thank you.
What is the process now? What?
As lays on, I think it's in the bylaws what goes next.
Yeah, so the first, first meeting of the new fiscal year, which is starting in July, the board will come together, and the first order of business will be to vote on a, a chair and an assistant chair.
And you're not gonna be here for that?
And, no, I'll be watching.
I like the sound.
And also, I would suggest that the first thing that we typically do in the July meeting is to review the bylaws, which we do on an annual basis, and if there are any changes or recommendations to the bylaws, that we review those at that time and send those forward to the select board. So, that would be two things, administrative things that need to be done in the first meeting. And then you proceed on to review whatever site plans were before you.
Are you gonna leave some of your, what do they, what do they call the stuff that you just repeat every?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, it's all available. I am happy to be available or assist however anyone asks me to. I'm certainly not gonna try to step in and interfere. If anyone would like to give me a call and ask me a question about something, I'll offer my opinion, which is just my opinion, nothing else. So, thank you all for all of your time and your dedication as volunteers, I appreciate that. Thank you, Ryan, for your support all, all through the years. It's been very beneficial to the, myself and the board.
Thank you for being the chair, I appreciate it.
It's been fun. Any other business?
We need to take you out for a drink.
See that excited? Hey, I think we're done.
Any other business?
I have a question.
Yes.
Which is that, I think I asked Orion, but transitioning from a alternate member to a full member, does that happen automatically?
No, you, you need to apply, and the select board will review that application to go from alternate to full member.
I see, okay, I thought you said that it would just happen.
No.
Be when there was a vacancy. No? What, okay, when do I do that? Is it a rolling application?
Yeah, I just want to have her, I mean, we can, you can put one in now.
Okay. And is the application on the website?
Yeah, I think we can find your old one, but I can just tell Diane you wanna roll over to a full member.
I'd like to, and then, if you would let me know if I need to send anything else in, I'll be happy to do that.
Sure.
Still leaves one vacancy.
Yep. So, we need to find, we should find one more member, so if y'all know anybody.
And one alternate vacancy of Scott. And one alternate vacancy is Scott's.
Yep, yep.
All right, so with that, is there a, a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Jan, seconded by Scott, and this meeting is officially adjourned at six oh nine PM. Thank you. Thanks, Joe.